So we're doing our work session in this chamber where we normally do it on the first floor. Welcome. This is probably a record number of folks attending the work session, so I'm glad we're doing it up here. To begin with, I have an announcement to make on behalf of council. This is a statement that's been made public as of about five minutes ago. The Asheville City Council has unanimously decided to replace city manager Gary Jackson effective at the close of business today. We appreciate the many successes Gary has brought Asheville in his 13 years here. However, we believe that making this change now is in the city's and his best interests. Assistant City Manager Kathy Ball will serve as interim city manager until a new city manager is selected. Additionally, Councilwoman Gwen Whistler will lead transition planning pro bono, meaning she won't be compensated, to assist with the eventual transition to a new city manager. We wish Gary well and thank him for the good work that he has done for Asheville and the region. And then, for those that received the press release, there is an explanation regarding Gary's contract and the payment required under his contract upon his leaving the city. Today, we're going to have kind of a two-part work session, and you should have been able to receive the agenda out front, and for anyone watching, it's online on the city's The first part of this work session is dedicated to the council's priorities in addressing policing in Asheville. The agenda is particularly detailed, so the public has a basic outline of the items we're going to discuss here today. The purpose of this meeting is for council to come to a consensus about direction we'd like to give staff around areas that we want to explore and make changes in. It is, since this is a work session, this is not a time where we will take public comment, but of course, it's a public meeting. So, we do have, for some of these items, we do have some staff that have been able to do some research in advance of today, and they may provide us some information as we move through this agenda. At the conclusion of the first section of the agenda, then we will go into our budget presentation, which is just the first step in our budgeting process. It's that time of year again, and so we're going to hear from Barbara Whitehorn, our finance director, and she will give us kind of a broad overview. But this will be the first touch at the budget. There'll be several more to come, and of course, opportunities later on for public comment around the budget. Okay. So, in kicking this off, and council, I think you've got your agendas in front of you. The agenda here talks about, and this is sort of in no particular order, but I'm sort of made up the order to try to give us some framework for it. The first part of this agenda talks about a third-party review of the Asheville Police Department, and then some specifics regarding policies and procedures. So, the concept here is to have an outside entity come in and do a review around the incident involving Mr. Rush and former Officer Hickman, and to give us a set of recommendations around that incident about, you know, what we're not doing, what we need to be doing to help us as a body work to help make our police department a better department. There is already an ongoing Department of Justice investigation that is centered around a civil rights issue, so they'll be doing their own investigation of the incident, and they will convene a grand jury in April. But if we want to be able to kind of walk through this ourselves, we're going to need to have our own way to do that. We can't know exactly what the scope of the DOJ review will be or what the outcome will be, so, you know, we need to, we don't want to just rely on that, in other words. I have had some preliminary conversations with the chief about this. She is receptive to this idea and will work with us. And Kathy, I think what the next step would be, would, to ask the staff to work with the chief and come up with a proposal for an entity to come in and do this work fairly quickly, not something that we want to take forever. So that's the general idea. Does anyone else want to add anything to that, to that item?
I would, I would just say, one other issue that we've had some conversation around is, you know, historically, there's been a pretty clear, I would say, gulf between sort of policy that city council sets and policy that gets set within the police department. And I think that's been some, a point of frustration for a number of us, and so I would encourage that that be a, that either we look at that separately, or that this third-party could maybe share with us some ways that other cities have handled that, and, you know-
The relationship between the council and the-
Between the council and the department when it comes to setting policy, because it certainly seems to me that, you know, we might be at one extreme, and we certainly wouldn't want to go to another extreme, but there has to be a middle ground where our concerns get reflected in those policies. So, I just want to make sure that that, that structure is included in that analysis.
I would agree. A couple of the items under here have actually already been instituted but are mentioned here, so the public knows that. That is that all excessive use of force complaints will be investigated criminally immediately, instead of having an internal review process and then a criminal review process. That change has already been made, so if we have an excessive use of force incident, which hopefully will not, but if we do, that's how that will be handled. And that, we have also asked for a change in the administrative procedures to make sure council is notified of any excessive use of force occurrence, not a complaint, an occurrence at all, so whether or not somebody makes a complaint. And then we want the department to come up with a procedure around notifying the district attorney and the SBI in the event that this ever happens again. So, but I, I would hope that a third-party review could look pretty comprehensively at this incident and give us some recommendations to implement, or any changes that they see that we need. You know, so, so moving through this agenda, I think what will be important is that we give, that we give our indication that we're all in support of doing something, so we'll need a motion and a, and a second-
For this third-party review part?
For the, yes, for the third-party review part.
All right. I make a motion for a third-party review of the Asheville Police Department with items A, B, and C, some of which have already been considered.
My second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The second item under here is to begin to aggressively implement the Blue Ribbon Task Force recommendations around the Human Relations Commission creation. And that, those steps are happening. Gwen, do you want to give us a little update about where you are in the process at boards and commissions with the HRC creation, or drafting, or should I go to Robin? It was more of a drafting the ordinance to create it, right?
Right. The ordinance has been drafted, and there's been some comments that were made at governance in Kelly Woodlock. They've been all incorporated, so it's going to come on the 10th?
To council.
Right. And as soon as it's adopted, then we'll-
As soon as it's adopted, we will start to advertise for those vacancies. So, we, potentially, April 10th, you know, we could potentially be looking at the first meeting, the very beginning of June, if there's not a lot of interviewing, and that, I mean, that's the-
Okay. So, so that is already happening, and as a part of that, and again, I've talked to the chief about this, about the HRC, or if the HRC has some kind of subcommittee or something, to be able to review all use of force occurrences. So what that means is, this, I'm not talking here about excessive use of force, I'm talking about any use of force occurrence, and this is where force is used at any level. We already have a system now within APD where that has to be reported, and, and the superior to that officer comes out and does a review of that use of force, and there's a report associated with that. The HRC or any kind of subcommittee can't see body cam footage because of the state law, but they can hear a summary with names redacted of use of force incidents and just be aware of them. The number of use of force incidents in APD has dropped dramatically, but this would still be a way to sort of have an external check on the number, how often, what the circumstances are, that kind of thing. I did take the opportunity to speak with the mayor of Greensboro, because we have been hearing a lot about what Greensboro does, why can't we have something like Greensboro? Greensboro does have local legislation, and as we move through this agenda, you'll see here, we'll explore that idea. They have a police, a citizen review board, but their review board cannot see body cam footage either. But they have, they have gone to court to see it at least once, since the new law has been in place, and the judge allowed them to see it with a gag order, so they aren't allowed to share that, share that with the public, but they were able to view it for themselves. So that, we, we've got some work to do in exploring the different options there. It does look like legislation would be required for us to be able to emulate something like Greensboro, but in any event, the first step in the process is to create the Human Relations Commission, and so we'll, we'll be taking those steps. The other piece of this is to, as part of the Blue Ribbon Task Force recommendation was to fill out the Equity Inclusion Department, if you will, or make it a department, and that, and staffing it up. That process is also happening, and I don't know if anyone can give us more information about that, but that, that process is ongoing. I added here, without consulting any attorney, other than me, myself, but not being a legal expert in this area, that exploring the idea of having somebody in the Equity and Inclusion Department have the ability to review body cam footage. So, you know, the restriction under state law for body cam footage is that folks like us can't see it, but certain people within the chain of command can see it, and is there a way for someone who's not a sworn officer, but under Kimberly's auspices, which is Equity Inclusion, to be able to, to review body cam footage? You know, just a different perspective might be, might be helpful for someone coming up. And that, you know, I just threw that out there as such as just, and put this on the agenda, because I don't know the answer to that under state law, if that's going to be something that's possible to do, but struggling here to come up with reasonable ideas, so that was one of them.
I have a question. I didn't have any knowledge about the Blue Ribbon Task Force reconvening to even discuss the Police Advisory Subcommittee, so have we had any conversation with them to get ideas about how this can be implemented?
No, the Blue Ribbon, the Blue Ribbon Committee didn't, didn't really focus too much on this area. It has been discussed at some level, not, not a lot, at CPAC meetings. So, what I would probably envision is that the HRCA would take it up as soon as possible, and if, if the HRCA doesn't get formed as quickly as we'd like to see, then maybe we kick it back to CPAC and see if they can help.
And I think one, one of the problems there was the, right, is the legislative barrier, you know, so we kind of, we know theoretically what we want, but we know legally we can't do it yet, so I think it's going to be a little bit of a chicken and egg, do we get HRC to work with legal to come up with a proposal that we asked the legislature for? Or, short of that, what can we do if for some reason we're not able to get legislation There's no action to be taken under this, because these recommendations were already voted on and adopted by this body. This is sort of more about how to bring in some of these elements within the Blue Ribbon Task Force.
Do we, do we, on the sort of B, the B2 issue-
This is the Equity Inclusion Department?
That's right. So do we, do we need to vote to ask staff to look at the degree to which that would be legal?
A staff person could look at the footage?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Or do we just need to ask-
Or we could just, we could just ask Robin to look at that idea and see if there's a way to do it. I mean, not right now, but, you know, I see you have the statue in front of you.
Yeah. I'm not going to answer now.
You're good.
Yeah, okay.
But that is, we, that is something we all want to see.
Is that, yeah, is that, is there-
I mean, that we want, we want the answer to.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think what we'd want to know is the answer to the question of whether that's even possible, and then how would that fit with the current practices already at APD? Because already, they have a program where they're auditing body cam footage and how that works, so, well, if it's possible, and how would you then pair those functions, where APD's already doing that audit with, with someone in Equity Inclusion who could be a part of that?
And for me, I guess it's sort of related to that, and then also maybe back up to A, to, to A is, I know that, as you just said, there is a policy around review of body cam video. I don't know that any of us know what that is, and whether that's an issue that could be looked at in the third-party analysis as well. Maybe that's-
Your, say that again? The current policy?
The current policy, and whether that needs to be-
Tweeted.
Tweeted a little bit, I mean, separate and apart from whether there's anybody in the office, in the equity office of, who can do it, do we need to also look at, and this, again, gets back to that, the role, the council and the, and the police role in terms of who sets that kind of policy, but-
So, what I hear you say, there's kind of two different things. One is, what is the current practice of APD in terms of the way they audit body cam footage? And then maybe also a review of our retention policy and how we handle, I see Liam Melton's here, our public defender, and who kindly sent me an email yesterday, I think it was, right? It's been a long, long time, about our, our retention policy, which calls for 60 days, and the problems that creates for folks that may end up with a public defender who don't even get their attorney within that-
60 days.
60 days, and already the footage is gone. So, a revisit of the retention policy as well. So the auditing practice, the current auditing practice, and the review of the, of the retention policy, and another look at that. Okay, so C, so this is like, I guess periodically I mention this, this is like live making the sausage. So, that's what we're doing. The idea with C, it is, it's to fund an outside legal position to advocate for individuals filing complaints against law enforcement. So, and I see Jim Barrett here with Piscilegal, who, who, thank you for being here. But the idea here was to fund a legal position, so a lawyer, not within the city, outside the city, maybe at a nonprofit, say, like Piscilegal Services, who could represent people who are bringing complaints against law enforcement, like if it's APD or the Sheriff's Department. I've had some very preliminary discussions with the chair of the county commission about the possibility of co-funding this position. You know, right now, you can walk into the police department and file a complaint against law enforcement, but it can be a complicated process for a complainant, especially with the body cam laws layered on top of it. You, you know, you have the right to see the footage, but you, it's a complicated process if you wanted to go to court and try to get it released, that's not something that's obvious to someone who's not a lawyer. So this would be someone who could help a complainant navigate that system, basically, and not be housed within the city or the county in a third, third-party entity, so that you could maintain that kind of check and balance. This is, this, I don't know if this has ever been done anywhere, so this is, you know, thinking out loud here, kind of very theoretical. We need to have discussions with the county, as well as with a third-party entity to house this position, like Piscilegal Services, if that's appropriate. But, I guess what I'd be looking for here with the council is, is there an interest in exploring this idea, which is pretty, you know, rough right now, and let staff kind of investigate the opportunities here?
Yeah, and Esther, part of, part of what we're looking at here is, this individual would almost help, help them navigate through the process, which at this point is somewhat difficult, as you kind of mentioned.
Because you don't, you're not entitled to a court-appointed attorney, you know, you are, if you're criminally charged with something and you're going to court, but you're not if you're just trying to figure out how to navigate filing complaint against police.
Right. And the other thing I would put in here, too, I mean, I think this is an idea worth exploring. I think in terms of what, what the individual does is going to be a question that I guess we'll go through as, as we talk through it. The other thing that I do really want to advocate here is that I think this makes a whole lot of sense to go in with the county on this. I mean, we heard from them at our joint meeting about their concerns that Asheville had, and, and I doubt they want to be on the receiving end of something that we were on. And so I would assume that the county, and particularly those folks who were, who were particularly critical of the city's responses here, would be willing to do this, because this would be a, essentially a check on, or, or an opportunity to, to avoid the situation that we have just gone through ourselves.
Well, and they've had their own complaints at the jail and with their own, with their officers as well, so I agree with that. The other thing I would sort of want to put into this mix is, particularly if it's a position that, that would land at Piscilegal, but even if it doesn't, is, again, we're in this big conversation around policy and, and things like that, and I, just to keep using Piscilegal, Piscilegal does a really great policy advocacy on a whole host of issues, and this might be, so adding policy advocacy to this suite of work-
For this person.
For that attorney would be something I would support.
Okay, so, do, do, how about just a quick motion, just to make sure we have, to explore this idea?
Yeah, I'm happy to move that we explore the funding an outside legal position to advocate for individuals filing complaints against law enforcement, and I'll just add policy, policy advocacy around law enforcement as well.
And I would add jointly with the county.
Jointly with the county.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item is to review the city of Asheville Personnel Policies and Civil Service Board rules to allow the city to remove employees who demonstrate terminable conduct. This is, you know, our own unique complicated web of Civil Service Board and our, and our own personnel rules that have hamstrung us from time to time in terms of trying to manage the city well. And I think some of this is already ongoing. If, I don't know if anybody wants to update it, but some of it, some of it is, are items we can handle internally in terms of our own personnel policies, but some of it, in dealing with the Civil Service Board, will require legislation, because the Civil Service Board is created by a local bill, and what it can do is specified in that local bill. So, we'll, we'll need to kind of get a good idea of what we're asking for, and Robin, it'll fall on you in terms of drafting suggested legislation for how to get it right on the, on the Civil Service Board. And then I think Peggy's here, I'm not sure who's going to be shepherding through the personnel policy review and rewrite, but-
Sorry.
In Gwen's new role, she will be there to help, help move that, that stuff through. It's got to go to Civil Service Board for review, correct? Is that the next step?
They, they'll just, it'll be in front of them for, for review, but they do not approve personnel policy.
Okay, it's just a recommendation.
It's just, well, we, we adopt it, and they, and we give them a heads-up.
And then where does it, where will it land ultimately? Here?
Here. Well, no, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily vote on it, it's a-
Right, because it's a personal-
It's a personnel policy, so-
So we could review the changes here just for information purposes and kind of feedback? Okay, I'm looking at Peggy, she's nodding.
Yeah, and I, what, the one thing I would add on item D is, the Civil Service Board, in combination with a potential, I'm looking at the name, the Police Advisory Subcommittee, is, it seems a little, it's-
A potential clash?
They may be, they may have contrasting objectives, and so I think, you know, looking at this as a whole, and, you know, when we are approaching the legislators in Raleigh, I think, you know, we, we can't just look at one, we have to, we have to look at, at both of those policies.
So we'll need to come forward with some kind of package-
Package deal.
Package deal.
I'd also just like to comment on here, I mean, I think as part of this, one thing, and this may already be baked in here, but I would really think it'd be a good idea to get some of the input from some of our department heads, in terms of kind of their, just kind of their day-to-day dealings with, with the board, just in terms of kind of, you know, how, how, how they interact, and some of the things that they might find to be useful or found to be impediments. And obviously, there's a balance there, right? I mean, there's, there's the point to have a civil, civil service board, so that people are not, you know, fired or disciplined inappropriately. At the same time, I think there's a, there's a feeling, too, that in some cases, they have been seen as an impediment. So, so I would just make two points. One is to make sure that we get the input of our, of our department heads as part of this process. The second thing is, is I don't think it's, it's worth taking kind of another step back, I think it's worth taking maybe another step back and not necessarily just say, "Look, those who demonstrate terminable conduct," but also in terms of kind of, you know, also in terms of discipline and things like that. I'm not asking for like a three-year review of all this, but if we're going to take the time to kind of talk and look about, and look at what the Civil Service Board does and some issues that may be out there, I think it's, I don't think we necessarily should take that much of a narrow view on that, just to, just to limit that terminable conduct.
Yeah, I think that one of the reasons that that particular ability was pulled out is because that is unique to all the Civil Service Boards in North Carolina, that that ability to reinstate folks who have been terminated is not a, is not something that any other Civil Service Board in North Carolina is allowed to do. And so that's, that has been, you know, just a, a unique-
Understood.
Part of it. But yeah, I agree with you, I mean, just looking at it as a whole, and making sure that we're covering all the bases.
And can I just ask a question here, clarification for me, but maybe also for everyone else? So we have, there's sort of two sets of things. There's our own internal city personnel policies, that as we, as we found out, those alone do not allow for immediate termination, even for this kind of conduct. So, so that's, that's the thing, and that's what Peggy's looking at, and that's, that's a conversation that's already started. And then there's the Civil Service Board, which has its own set of rules, that, I mean, own set of authority, but through state statute, and those two things work together in some way that I don't fully understand, but we, we probably should all understand that at some point.
Well, just very fundamentally, I mean, the Civil Service Board is going to look to see whether the city followed its own personnel rules.
Okay. So we can set the rules, and the Civil Service Board follows those rules. That's-
Well, they make sure that the city follows the rules.
Well, of course, of course, that's right. And then, and then the separate, maybe third piece is the, is the ability to reinstate, which is a, is a legislative piece that we've said we want to work on. So, okay.
Do we mangle that too much, Robin?
So, I guess, well, my, my question in really asking that is that we actually have a fair amount of authority to change our own rules about how discipline happens, and when people are dismissed, and things like that. Is that right? And I think I didn't realize that before now.
The Civil Service Act basically says that certain employment actions cannot be taken unless they're justified, and that's the test. And that's termination, demotion, certain transfers, and reduction in pay. So no matter what, on those particular things, the test is always going to be whether it's justified.
So in other words, we couldn't say, "Let's make all city employees at-will employees."
Of course.
I mean, we couldn't do that, so-
Right. But we can define justified in a way-
While the court has helped us define it.
And the court's already done that, so we, we are, you know, we're sort of stuck with that right, right now, as far as those particular employment actions. I think one thing we were talking about today, there are a number of adverse or potential employment actions that can be taken that aren't encompassed in the Civil Service Act. So you have to have, you have to rise to a certain level, and so that there will be a different way that you could potentially deal with those employment actions, and also the way that there's a exhaustion process, and how you go up the chain before you get to the Civil Service Board, and I think there's some conversation about potentially changing how that happens. So, but as far as this, that, that one group of things that fall within the act is going to, would have to be a legislative change.
Well, and so, I mean, just to, you know, so that in the event that city staff is listening to this, you know, what we're trying to do is find that space of prot- listening to this, you know, what we're trying to do is find that space of protecting employees so that they're not being unfairly disciplined or terminated or whatever, but also making sure that the management, management group can take definitive action in a timely manner to protect, to protect the interests of our citizens. So that's really what we're trying to do with all, with this whole discussion. So, you know, this isn't just get rid of the Civil Service Board, that's not the intention, because there's a reason for it. I mean, the reason is, you don't want the city terminating people for unjustified causes, but at the same time, it's just a, it's a line, it's a sweet spot we need to find.
Great, thank you, well articulated.
Well, we just went down the rabbit hole of employment law, but we needed to, so that was good.
So I'm happy to make a motion, if we're ready.
Sure.
Yes, sure.
So I make a motion that we ask the city staff to review the City of Asheville Personnel Policies and the Civil Service Board Review Rules, and I'm going to maybe broaden this out a little bit, to more broadly explore the balance that Gwen just articulated between needing to protect employees, but also needing to protect the public and other employees, and giving management the appropriate and legal discretion to do, to take action in a timely manner.
Second.
Did you get all that, Maggie?
Yeah, don't put what Gwen said.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one got a little bit mangled up because the heading doesn't fit all the things under it, but the first, it's basically, the first item is to create an aggressive plan to hire minority officers. There is already work underway to do this, but I think the idea here is to enhance that push, and it may, it may mean that we need to do more on our part in terms of, there may be funding necessary, creative solutions that haven't been tried yet, and I'm looking at Peggy a little bit, because this is kind of, obviously, in an HR world, working with the chief to see what she's already doing and what else could be, we could do that's out there. That's just the basic idea here. And there's some items under this, but they're kind of separate. So, so one is an aggressive plan to hire minority officers. Under this, we put, and this should have been in a different place, but it's encouraging people to bring complaints against law enforcement. This, this was, you know, this was kind of really more in the conversation about hiring, having an outside attorney available to help complainants, but not so much encouraging, but making sure people understand that that is something that's available to them. If they, if they have something that they, that rises to the level of needing to file a complaint, that they understand that they have that option available to them.
Right, so I would, I would re, kind of reword that, as to, you know, educating people about the ability and the process of bringing complaints against law enforcement.
Right.
Encourage seems a little
Well, and key to that is making it easy, I'm sorry.
I think encourage also because we're taking a new stance with the policies that we're putting in place, so therefore, a lot of people were hesitant to put in a complaint because they thought it would fall on dead ground.
Right.
So I think encouragement as well as
Education.
Just education.
And then coupled with that was this idea of the unbiased policing hotline, and that was, you know, just to make, you just have a whole bunch of tools in the toolbox for anyone who needs to bring a complaint against police, whether it's the Sheriff's Department or APD or whoever it is, that they, that there's, you know, hotlines, that there's information, that there's resources available to folks.
And, and again, I would say, we, in addition to educating and encouraging and informing, we need to make it easy for people. It needs to be very front and center on the police website. I'm not sure that that's the case right now, so. And that's an easy change that hopefully can be made.
Yeah, and I would hope that if we do end up having this outside legal position, that that group would also, or that person, would also give, give ideas on how to make that system easier to navigate, so that, you know, you don't have to get an attorney to, to get involved. I mean, you know, ultimately, what you want to do is allow citizens to do this, you know, without outside help.
And this is also about building trust.
Right.
So if it's coming from council and very visible to people, and, I mean, it'll take some type of marketing strategy to do that as well, then they'll know that we're really trying to build relationships and mend these broken, broken pieces.
So organizationally, Kathy, I would say that the piece about the outside council is really coupled with this idea of informing and encouraging people about how to bring complaints, and also the policing hotline. And I know we have some kind of hotline of sorts already, I'm looking at Dawa set up, but I wasn't sure
It's
Not specifically.
It's offered comment, but there's a professional standards, that line, all that information is available on the police department's website now. And that is currently where people call out, as we move forward, and therefore opportunities that can be brought up.
Okay, so, I don't know if we need a motion, but that was just sort of packaged with that.
And one other thing I just wanted to bring up here, and this may not be the right place to do it, but, you know, one of the issues I know that at least the chief faces too, is once a complaint has been, has been raised, there's a limitation in terms of what she, or any chief can really say as to the resolution of that. So, for example, once someone may make a complaint, the chief may actually act upon that complaint, and then the individual actually is not able, the chief cannot tell that individual that action was taken.
Right.
Which seems to be kind of a problem, because people are going to say, "All right, we're going to set up this line to help navigate the process."
But then you can't.
But then they're going to be like, "Well, what happened to this?" It's a black hole, and the chief's in a bad spot where she can't come back and
Tell people.
And tell people the resolution of that complaint. And so, so I realize that's a legislative issue, but I think that's got to be part of this, because otherwise, we're just going to be setting up a process that people are going to wonder
So, if you look down at the agenda, so, under this next session, under legislative changes, there's a number of items, and that is one of them.
Fair enough.
Sorry, did I almost
You did.
But, so, but just to be orderly before we get there, because I think that's right, and Keith's whispering in my ear, we're going to follow Robert's rules here. So let's, let's have a motion to, to explore the idea of educating people to bring complaints, to encourage people to bring complaints, coupled with the hotline concept.
Coupled with making it easy.
Okay, so is that a motion to that effect?
Sure, yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then on the hiring of minority officers, how about this, would we ask staff to, Peggy and maybe work with the chief, to come to finance, since you guys are now financing employment, with a proposal to, about enhancing our minority recruitment efforts, maybe hear about what we're already doing, and then how, how those could be enhanced, what's, what we're not doing that we could be doing. And maybe we're doing everything we can, and I don't, I don't know that, but, but to review that, so.
That's for the financial aspect.
Well, also because there, finance is now finance and each other, so to hear the plan. And it may require some financing. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're not giving timelines for this, but obviously, all of this is urgent. That
Let me throw in a second bar, to the motion that was just made and seconded and everybody approved, to maybe have whatever information is brought forward, finance, so it be followed up to governance.
Sure.
It's kind of a review.
Okay.
Sure.
The last piece of this is, is a set of legislative requests. So the first one is to request that our legislature pass House Bill 165. This is the bill that would allow for police advisory committees to actually meaningfully function, not just in the cities that have that local legislation. The second one is to implement any civil service board changes that we determine are necessary. And the third is to, to address personnel laws. And that, under, under this falls actually a couple of different things. One is the body cam footage law, which is considered private personnel matters, which is why it can't be released, apparently, according to the legislative thinking. There is a movement afoot to, to at least let councils look at the footage, so, you know, I'm not hopeful the legislature will overturn their current legislation in toto, but maybe they would consider allowing city councils to look at it, or police advisory committees to look at it. And then also, as Vijay mentioned, because of personnel laws, you know, which I hope, I assume we're not intended to have this effect, but they have, they prevent a complainant from hearing the results of their complaint to the extent it results in any kind of discipline against an officer, because it's a private personnel matter. So we, as a council, have tried to think about ways to sort of manage, manage that statute within this council, like, do we hear in closed session every single complaint filed against the police department and then author a vote to allow the release of the personnel information for each complaint filed? You know, it's, it's a rough way to handle it, because then it's public to everybody, which may be appropriate, but maybe the complainant doesn't want it to be public to everybody. You know, that's a little bit difficult. So what we're looking for here is a legislative solution that allows complainants to hear the results of their complaint, basically, and to know whether that officer was reprimanded or not.
My question, in this, are we, are we looking just solely focused on police, or is this, is this something that is, that, I mean, I assume this would impact other departments as well, folks who make
Yeah, I mean, the way the personnel law is drafted right now, it doesn't specify what kind of public employee, it just talks about public employees. So it would be any employee.
So I'm supportive of those, I'm happy to make a motion if there's no other discussion.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that concludes this to-do list. Anybody, anybody, anything they want to add to this to-do list? This is, you know, we're beginning the process of, of making these changes. Some of these can be done right away, some of these are going to take longer, some of them may not be possible, but that's, that's what we've got here.
Yeah, I would just say, again, this is a work session, so we don't normally take public comment, but if you have comments on what we've talked about and what we voted on today, and if you think there's other things that we need to be doing, please let us know. I know that in crafting this agenda, this came from, you know, statements that we've received from many of you, and emails and our own conversations, but if we, if there are things that you feel like we haven't yet hit on, please do let us know. This is just, as the mayor says, just the first step.
And we didn't set specific timelines for this stuff, but I think it's very obvious that some of this is kind of ongoing, already happening, some of it is going to get started pretty quickly, I would think, but to somehow get periodic updates from staff as, as some of this stuff kind of moves forward, I don't think this is something that's going to be like a six to eight month process, so we're not, I wouldn't perceive to look at it that way. So fairly quickly, but, but not a long drawn-out process for a lot of this stuff.
I think staff would be happy to provide monthly reports to you on the update of how we're moving forward on each of those.
Okay, so that concludes this first part of the work session, and now we're going to move into the budget presentation. Everyone's welcome to stay for the budget presentation as well, or not. Barbara, don't take offense.
Oh, that everyone sees.
That everyone sees.
It just like reassures me that I'm not a, not a, not a figure of concern.
Oh, I thought you guys were
No, we didn't have to.
Okay, now, now I'm starting to feel offended.
Now you're getting your feelings hurt a little bit. So when there's only two people left and they're all staff.
Can one of the TV cameras stay, just for, you know, just to make her feel better?
Oh, look, they're all leaving.
Barbara, do you have a presentation?
Uh huh, I'm, mayor, members of council, I'm Barbara Whitehorn, the Chief Financial Officer for the city. And if I, if I may recommend that we deal with the Aston Park Tennis Center fees first, that's the simplest piece. Can I use that? Okay, we've had the finance committee and staff and the tennis playing community have had a number of meetings and discussions about the fees at the Aston Park Tennis Center. We have arrived at a recommended, recommended rates for fiscal year 1819, which is essentially the season of 2018. So these are the fees, y'all should have received a staff report last week. They are lowering some of the annual fees to a small degree, and increasing the hourly court rental fees pretty nominally. A staff analysis that, that our treasurer did show that we anticipate about the same amount of revenue, maybe a little bit more with these fees. And we are committed to doing a really deep dive, I know we overuse that phrase, into Aston Park operations, and really understand what the drivers of the revenues are, what the programming needs to be, and how to really take advantage of that center as a city to make it, you know, a revenue generator, generator for the city and a great asset for the community. So here are the proposed fees.
And Barbara, there was one issue that was left unresolved at finance, or it didn't come up until after finance, and that is the, the question of, at what age does one become a senior? And what I think we've learned is that there is a, we have differences in different parts of our, different parts of our policies about when you become a senior.
It's always older than I am.
Okay, we're just going to peg it to, what, what would you like, 15 years older than you are, whatever it is, I don't know. So the question is whether it's 65 or 67. Currently, Aston, the Aston senior fees kick in at 67, but they kick in at 65 for transit and some other, what was the other thing? Can't remember.
I can't remember, but across the city, it was 65 except for Aston Park.
Except for Aston, so.
So it seems like a reasonable
Yeah, so I'd like to suggest that we make, that we designate the senior level at, senior threshold at 65, which is, I will note, older than Gwen.
Yay.
I think.
Ouch.
Are you a senior, like, A or B, like, 50?
50.
50, and you start getting the mailings.
So I'll be getting that soon.
Great. And there was another issue that came up at the meeting that we really didn't address, and I would say, you know, let's defer this until October, but some people were calling for, for elderly seniors to get a reduced fee. So, you know, you'd have an adult, you'd have 65 to a certain age, and then above that certain age, that senior, senior fee. Then that would come down a little bit. We did not address that at finance, and I would just say, let's, let's continue to just hold that discussion off and put it, discuss it in October.
I think we can try to collect some demographic information from people as they're, you know, willing, willing to provide it, and we can, if that seems like a good idea, we can come up with a term that honors their senior, senior status. You know, I mean, how are you supposed to put that that sounds good? Because it really is like amazing good.
And Barbara, the, one of the other issues that, again, we didn't really resolve, we just sort of left it to staff, was this, this idea of allowing people to pay, and perhaps, pay these fees perhaps in two installments over the course of the season. My understanding is that that is actually not very difficult from a technology standpoint, that, you know, when people bypass, we put them into the system, they have a little thing that they scan in. It seems easy enough to me that you could just put the expiration date at a, at a different time, and when they scan in and it doesn't scan, they know they need to write another check. So I think, I think there was some resistance to trying to do that for this year. I would just, I guess I would ask again, if, if staff could look at that and see if that could be possible for this year, that it could. My understanding is, and I think we heard it at that hearing, is that it could, that could make a big difference for some people who are, particularly our seniors who are on fixed income. for some people who are particularly our seniors who are on fixed incomes.
Staff, staff's happy to look at it.
Just, what do we come out of this, Barbara, too? Two, two points on this.
It's not so easy.
Just, just one is, one is, although you're seeing some of those fees rolled back for the annual passes, you're seeing the hourly rates go up. And if, you know, just in terms of giving some people some perspective on this, you know, we subsidize, essentially, the general fund subsidizes Aston by about $130,000 a year.
Yes.
Right? And that's what it's been over the past couple of years, and we've seen a shift from the passes to the hourly. So, so the goal here with all this is that we still think, based on this, that we're going to have as much revenue or more than we had prior. So this isn't, we aren't, we aren't trying to increase the subsidy as, as, as part of it.
No, we're really trying to find the balance between the hourly court rentals and the annual passes where it's affordable for anyone who wants to play, and depending on how much they want to play, a season pass is a good deal, or an hourly rate is a good deal.
Thanks. So we need a motion to adopt these?
I would make a motion to adopt these fees for Aston Park with, with the one change that we talked about, which is 65 and plus, for the 18-19 season.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
And can I just announce, related to this, that, that Aston opens technically, I think, on April 2nd, but on April 7th, which is the first Saturday of the season, there's a big celebration from, I think it's about 10 to 3, encouraging people to come get your season passes, and there'll be games, and obviously tennis playing and all of that sort of thing. So trying to make it a celebration and try to hit the targets on these income numbers, so that we can celebrate success at the end of the year.
All right, thank you. Can I have feedback to the...
So we're, we're going to be adopting fees and charges at our later regularly scheduled time, but because of the opening season, that's why we're doing Aston today.
Exactly.
And we did it pretty quickly, but thanks to all of you who have spent a lot of time on this topic.
All right, on to the budget work session presentation. So this is our first budget work session for the 2018-19 fiscal year budget. The presentation, we'll do a calendar review as always, we'll give you a forecast, a five-year forecast, then we'll talk about revenues and expenditures, the base revenues and expenditures in the budget, balancing strategies that staff has worked on, council priorities, and then next steps. So here's our budget process, calendar, today, obviously, the first work session. We have another on April 10th. We're also planning to have a finance committee meeting between the 27th and the 10th, working exclusively on the budget. So we'll have an additional meeting in there. And these dates, I think, are going to have some changes, because we have some council member availability issues. So when this is updated, we will update it immediately on the website, so that people know about it right away. So five-year high-level forecast. So what you're looking at is something that really shows in a table what we call our structural imbalance, which is that our, I'm going to go down a page, and I can come back to that, but you all, if you weren't here in 2013, you've probably heard this referred to a thousand times. We have the 2013 white paper that talks about the structural gap and the budgetary structural imbalance that we have, which is basically that projected revenues are not increasing at the same rate as expenditures. So every year, we bring expenditures down, and you can see we do that, and then they match revenues, and then revenues increase, expenditures increase, and we have to bring revenues down again. So we're in kind of a constant catch-up cycle, but as you know, over the last years, we, we do get there. You know, we get to a balanced budget. And this is, I, I, I want to point out that I don't think these are numbers that should alarm anyone in the long term. This is a very normal city thing, and it's a little more accentuated in Asheville, because we have more limited revenue streams than some other cities. So because we don't have the use of our hotel tax, you know, because we don't have sales tax that we can implement to benefit our city, but we have to do a sales tax through the state, we, we just have more limitations, which means we have to be much more creative in the way, the ways that we look at balancing, balancing the budget. So does anybody have any questions about that before I move on?
Barbara, we're currently in fiscal year 18.
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're anticipating being pretty much right on budget. Yeah. And there, let me look at that graph again. Okay, so to start, I want to give you kind of a breakdown of what we're experiencing. The additional revenue, which is, you know, the growth in revenues that we currently collect, is about $2 million. When we look at our expenditures, we have inflation and kind of the normal cost increases that you have, like doing an adjustment to compensation and increasing the cost of materials, you know, the regular stuff that you see.
So it assumes raises and increased cost of materials?
Yes. That's about 3.5 million. So that's our structural gap right there. And then we have partially funded enhancements that we did this past year that we have to fully fund coming into the next year. And then a couple of other items, like the request that the EITF 205,000 be moved to the operating budget rather than be funded with one-time funds. And then maintenance driven by CIP, and I actually call out that very low number only because as we complete the major CIP projects we have going, the maintenance costs to keep those things nice, whether it's greenways or whatever we're building, that drives maintenance costs up. I mean, it's not a bad thing, it's just, it's just the reality of the way it works. So the total expenditure increase is 7.821 million. So we have a gap of about 5.8 million. That sounds like terrifying, but it's, it's gonna be okay. So standard changes, we always see revenue growth about where we see it. Compensation and benefit changes, they're about the same. Inflationary cost pressures are about where we would anticipate them to be in an economy that's in pretty good shape. Atypical changes are the significant recurring investments that were funded for half a year, and the recurring items that were supported by fund balance appropriation last year that need to be shifted away from that this year in order for us to be financially healthy and sustainable as a city. So, and stop me anytime, please. Property tax is up 3%, which is pretty good for property tax here, because when we see an increase in property tax, it is growth, it is not revaluation, when we see it in between valuations. So we've had 3% actual growth in our property tax collections. Sales and other taxes is up 6%. Licenses and permits are down about 10%. That is really permit revenue leveling off. We had some major, major projects that brought in tremendous amounts of money with big fees, and we reached a tipping point where you can't continue to have the huge projects, but we're still seeing growth. So having those revenues where they are, I think, is reasonable. State utility taxes are flat, and right now, we have no plans to use fund balance for anything at this point. Expenditure highlights, transit, we have a continued reduction in grant revenue. If y'all remember, you know, the pie is the same size, but there's more people getting a piece. So ours is a little bit smaller again this year. We have the full year of the enhanced services that we implemented last year, and then the new management contract, which I understand is going extremely well. So that's a great thing. Public safety, we have the full year of the downtown district, the additional trainees to fully staff, the APD market adjustments to mitigate attrition, education and foreign language pay, and then a full year of additional AFD retirement contributions to the 401A.
Can you, Barbara, can you talk for a second about the third bullet there, the APD market adjustments to mitigate attrition? I'm wondering if this gets it, an issue that Keith raised earlier.
Those were adjustments made, Peggy's still there? She is. Okay, good. So if I say anything wrong, you can stand up and, you know. Those were adjustments that were made to try to make it more appealing to work in the city of Asheville, like correct some, some market, we were lower than market in some areas. And also to, then the education and foreign language pay incentives, and shift differential, which I didn't list here, feed right into that. And what that's intended to do is to keep the patrol officers that we train in Asheville, instead of training them and then they go somewhere else because they can get a shift differential and language pay and, you know, all kinds of other stuff that we didn't have. So it was really to...
Did you say language pay?
Language, right. Like if you have, yeah, a language that's...
Right, if you have...
Thanks. Any other questions?
So, in summary, it's to keep us competitive with what other...
Exactly.
...law enforcement divisions are offering for employment.
Yes, yes. And actually, to bring the APD in line with other departments in the city. Other departments in the city had shift differentials if they worked overnight shifts, and the police didn't. So it was really, it was an equity thing across departments as well.
And as I recall, this came up last year, and that, you know, that these disparities are differences, and, and that was actually, there was some discussion about it, but it wasn't included in last year's budget, and so we're addressing it.
Right. Actually, I think we funded this with fund balance last year.
Yeah, this was, this was a fund balance allocation.
Barbara, can you help me out, too? My understanding is, this may be for Peggy, my understanding is there is some analysis going on in terms of police compensation comparability versus other cities. Am I correct about that? Is that something that's currently being analyzed at this point? Do you know?
Peggy Rowe, HR director. We actually did some analysis prior to making these adjustments.
Okay. Is that something you all can share with us, in terms of kind of understanding who else you guys looked at, and what sort of the differences were?
Yes, we can do that. I mean, that, those kinds of things are ongoing. We're not specifically looking at police right now, but just as a general practice, we, in HR, you want to maintain your competitive nature and as it relates to compensation. So it's something that we look at on an ongoing basis, not just for police, but for all departments.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so expenditure highlights, part two. Citywide, we are restoring some one-time reductions that we made to balance the budget, you know, the non, the non-sustainable things, things that we cut, that we knew we could live without for a year, or we had a contract in place that we could keep, you know, keep using those services, but the things that weren't long-term sustainable, we restored. We have some enhanced IT security that's, that's needing to be funded. The items funded with fund balance in 17-18. Obviously, if we want to use fund balance, that's a policy decision at y'all's level if we want to use that for something this year. And then the economic development incentive contracts that come due every year, that's always a different amount. Compensation and benefits, salary adjustments, increased employer contribution to health insurance, and the mandated increased employer contribution to the retirement system.
Barbara, how much, how much are we anticipating health insurance to go up, and how much is our, roughly, is our, is our increased employer contribution for the...
The employer contribution, I'm going to have to ask Tony on those, the elders, the retirement, he can, you can head up if you want, on the elders.
Second elder?
The percentage.
Elder percent?
It's like super small, isn't it? It's a really small increase in percent.
Quarter of a percent on the retirement.
I'm sorry, can you say that? I didn't hear you.
One quarter of 1%.
Quarter of a percent, so it's going up, okay.
Yeah, it's not a, not a huge increase. And the increase for health insurance, we started out with a 5%, and when staff did our workshop and our brainstorming to find savings, we felt that it was, it was reasonable, given our claims history, to go with a 2.5% increase.
And we're self-insured, too, right?
Yes, and we, and we do think that, that that's in, in the ballpark of where we need to be.
Okay.
And did you already, we asked this in, or maybe I asked this in the budget briefing that I got, but the salary adjustments are, that's 3%?
That is at 3% right now. Okay, so staff, knowing that reasonably, we needed to bring you solutions to some of the issues that we're bringing up with the budget, we have done some analyses, we did trend analysis over multiple years of every budget line item. So like literally supplies in the city manager's office, how much have they been spending over the last five years? Or, you know, anything like that, contracted services and finance, every, every line item, we did a trend analysis and then identified if they were spending, they, if any department was spending consistently less than they were budgeted. And in those cases, we brought that information to the management team and said, "Look, look what you don't spend." And in most cases, in the trend analysis, those identified savings were accepted by the directors. You know, they're like, "You're right, I don't, I don't spend that." So that was our first, kind of our first pass at, you know, how can we, how can we make some savings? Reducing and eliminating program funding is always, is always a possibility. That's very challenging from a staff perspective, that is more of a policy decision if we want to discontinue particular programs within the, within the community. Identifying alternative funding sources, staff has worked on several, several different possible things that we could do. Most alternative funding sources that would be sustainable over the long term aren't something that we can implement today for this budget. They're more long-term strategies. And those are really important, because obviously, financial sustainability isn't just fiscal year 18-19, but it's keeping the city in good shape in fiscal 28-29. So that's what we're talking about there, and then one-time reductions to just kind of get by. And what we're trying to get to is a place where we're not just working on a short-term balanced budget, but rather, we're looking for long-term financial health for the city. Okay, so the management team, this is where the rubber kind of hit the road with the management team. We started out with an initial budget gap of 5.9, 5.8, 5.9. Staff identified savings and some revenues of 2.7 million dollars, and that has brought the remaining gap down to 3.2 million dollars. So that's a significant, a significant savings, but we're still, we're still facing a gap between where we anticipate our revenues and our expenditures.
Can you give us an idea of where the identified savings came from for the 2.7 million, just kind of abroad?
Yes, absolutely. And after this meeting, I'll be sending all of you the details of the meeting with the management team. There were, I should have got them here. We did, gosh, it might be better to have Tony do this, but there are all kinds of little things like reducing lots of, lots of line items according to trend. We did some one-time savings things, the things that aren't necessarily long-term sustainable, but we felt, you know, that this was an appropriate time to do them. Trying to identify items that we could not, not necessarily do that wouldn't have an impact on community service, those were a big thing. Budgeting the new assistant city manager for only six months, assuming that the new city manager would want to make that hire. So, and we actually did that for, we do that for all the positions in the city. When we have above a certain management level, we look at every position individually if they're vacant, and try to decide how long they'll remain vacant in order to identify savings. So that's some of that. Lots of different things. We looked at electricity trends, cost of natural gas, all kinds of, like where fuel's expected to be in 12 months.
So, so it wasn't, was it, it wasn't specific to this budget cycle? Was it, was it, were there, was there anything outside of that that was, was not specific to this budget cycle that could be ongoing?
That could be ongoing? I'm going to give you all a list of that, too, and I'm not sure I brought it with me, but we got a lot of brainstormed ideas for long-term things that we could do. For example, one was doing passport parking in the Marjory parking lot after hours, you know, something like that. Adding an additional special event fee to the parking garages that could maybe be dedicated to transit or to U.S. Cellular Center operations. We're trying really to think of creative ways to use revenue streams that we're not taking advantage of, because what we don't want to do is have an inequitable, you know, we want people to pay for a service they're getting. pay for a service they're getting.
Now, for the remaining imbalance that we have up here, the 3.2, has there been any identified different parcels of pots of money that maybe identified for bringing that imbalance?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet. I mean, I think we're brainstorming those ideas. I think those are going to take policy direction like hiring freezes, things of that nature that are pretty substantial as a policy level in order to kind of bring some of those things in line. But that wasn't included in the exercise that we did.
So I had, within the past maybe 24 months, I've been having, I had ongoing conversations with Mr. Jackson about identifying specific funds that we use for community, not community engagement, but certain things like, you know, what we do for IRL and things like that and what's built into the budget and what's not, and what's, you know, SPF funding and what's not, and kind of a comprehensive look at all the different things that we do-
Yes, sir.
-that can be, I guess optional is the word. Has that ever trickled down to anyone to ever-
We have a-
You know, have you ever got direction on that from that conversation?
We have a full list of all those and the contracts and how long they run and how much they're for. I think we're happy to provide that.
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Barbara, just to, I mean, I know you've said this, but I think we all need to remember, and I think you're going to get here, but right now, you're talking about the continuation budget.
Yeah.
So you're not talking about any enhancements that we talked about at the retreat, anything like that. This is just continuing, as of today, what we're doing today.
Right. This is our gap without any enhancements.
So 3.2 is not the end of the story.
No, no, it definitely isn't. Let me move on. Considerations as we're going into this fiscal year budget. Compensation, obviously ensuring that the city remains an employer of choice is important. We have in the past, it seems to be resolving a little bit, but Peggy can probably speak better than I can, to turnover. I know in my department, we've kind of resolved some of the major issues we had. But we did for several years have significant turnover in a number of departments as the economy got better and all of a sudden, we couldn't compete with private employers anymore. You know, during a recession, working for the city is like the greatest thing on earth, right? Because you know you have a job. But the reality is then you have the other side of that. You're never going to make as much money as the people in the private sector. And we have to find that balance of how do we remain an employer of choice while also acknowledging that I am never going to make as a CFO for the city the kind of money I might make as a CFO for a major corporation. And that's okay. So we just have to find that balance. And then we have unfunded priorities that council did identify during their retreat of equity, sustainability, participatory budgeting, and any other council strategic goals. Obviously, we're looking for additional revenues wherever we can find additional revenues. That's a, that is a challenge. As I said, Asheville is a bit limited in how we can develop revenues. And I know that we want to be a city that has a balanced portfolio of revenues. You know, we don't want all of the revenue coming from one place and all on, you know, one group of people. So those are really, it's very significant and important that we keep that in mind. So, any more questions before next steps?
Barbara, can you go back to the slide that showed the managed savings amount that staff, yes?
Yes.
So Councilman Young, I think you had a question about whether or not that 2.7 was ongoing. Is that correct? Is that what your question was?
Yeah, like was it a culmination of kind of some things that can happen now along with some things that are kind of, that could be ongoing? Or how was that, I mean, was it a mix of those things or what was it?
So I think when we provide you the list, we can show you which of those we would consider potential to, for them to be ongoing versus the potential for them to be one-time cuts. And an example of one that I'm thinking of is like the city manager's contingency budget was one of those that we made a recommendation to cut. So that could be ongoing. So I think that's made up, I just wanted to make sure we answered your question, that's made up of a mixture of both. So when we give you all the spreadsheet with each of those items, we can show you whether they are ongoing or just one time.
And then, you know, also just kind of the remaining imbalance, you know, different pots haven't been identified as far as where to possibly pick from and cut, but, and not asking staff to like make policy or anything like that, but to possibly identify what things are not as solid or could be, you know, kind of tweaked a bit.
What are potential efficiencies or cuts that we could do? I think staff is working, using our priority-based budgeting results to look at the items in that that kind of came out in quartile three and four, mostly quartile four, which means the things that aren't statutorily mandated, things that aren't required under our city charter, you know. And then when you get into three and four, where you really have to start thinking is, do we have to do this from an equity perspective? What is the benefit to the community? Because you end up with a list of things and you think, "Oh, but we still have to do that." So we have this list and we'll actually be providing it to you after this meeting. So you can look at it, and I have a memo that goes with it that kind of explains how the priority-based budgeting results came out. So that when you see it and you think, "We can't eliminate training," it's like, well, no. But, you know, like training me is not mandated by the state or, you know. So those things end up in lower quartiles. So we have some areas identified. I think we don't have, 3.2 million's a pretty, a pretty big goal.
Barbara, just to put it in context too, 3.2, so your projected expenditures are about 125 million next year. So I mean, that's about, doing quick math, about 2.6%.
Right, right. When you look at the overall-
When you translate into like percentage terms, we're talking, you know, you could say 97 point, we think 97.4% of our projected expenditures are covered.
Right. We're actually like 90, yeah, 97.6% covered, so, yeah.
I'm not minimizing that, I'm just trying to put this in some context for people.
It's important to understand though, because 3.2 seems like a huge number if you're never going to see that amount of money, you know, in your lifetime in a year. But the reality is for the city budget as a whole, and the city as a whole, the budget's around 175, 180 million, it's a relatively small amount. It's just, it's our, this is our hurdle this year, is the 3.2 million.
But it doesn't consider the unfunded things that we want to do with the aspirational things that I think council wants to do. So I think taking that into consideration, I think it, I mean, that could mean a great difference to a lot of these things we just kind of did in the first part of this work session. So it may not be a large number in the scope of the budget in its totality, but when you break it down to all the aspirational things that council wants to do, it could mean, wow, yeah, I mean, it can mean some very serious programs that we want to do, so.
And Barbara, can I ask, what are, do you, I think you do have this projection and I just don't remember what it is. Where are we going to be in terms of our fund balance? And I know you like to, you're militant about keeping a minimum percentage. What, how are we in?
Well, not just Barbara. It's actually an adopted policy by this council.
I get that.
Militant, like adopted.
All right. So we are all militant about keeping this minimum percentage, so tell us where we are.
Well, and to add to what Julie's asking, where are we, where are we, what are you thinking right now for end of year operationally?
Ending the year operationally, the budget team, you can look up here, is estimating that we're going to come in expenditures only slightly under revenue, maybe 120,000. I mean, not a huge impact, positive impact or negative on the fund balance this year. We think. I mean, you know, we've seen things improve considerably in the third quarter or not so much in the third quarter or the fourth quarter. So, you know, knowing that this is a projection.
And where, and are we at that minimum militant percentage in our fund balance right now or do we have in excess?
I think we're at about 16.5% right now. Our minimum, our absolute minimum is the 15%.
And so what does that difference represent?
I don't know in dollars.
Do you know in dollars?
No.
I mean, is it like a million? Is it 300,000?
I think the dollar number would be.
Maybe you can just send us the dollar number when you send us the follow-up.
Yeah, it's probably around a million dollars, probably a little bit more than that, but not, not a lot. One, just a caution, not trying to be militant, just a caution, when the Moody's and S&amp;P who rate our bonds, you know, they've given us the vaunted AAA. What they look at when they rate our debt, and they look at our debt every year because we're always issuing something, they look at the fund balance trend, not so much the fund balance amount. Once you've reached the fund balance amount that they want to see with a AAA, they're looking at trend. So if they see us spending it down every year, that to them says, "We need to put you on a credit watch."
What if we spend it down in one year?
Actually, that prevented us from getting to a AAA for almost five years when we spent it down.
And the other, and the other thing to mention is, as our, the 15% fund balance is based on 15% of your operating expenditures. So as we continue to increase those operating expenditures, then our fund balance requirements go up.
What's the frequency of the evaluation period for?
That they evaluate us?
Yes.
Well, every time we issue debt, and we issue debt every year. So they evaluate us every year. If we weren't issuing debt every year, they would look at us every couple of years.
And I'll just note, that 15%, there's the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, that, their best practice is actually, what, it was, I think, two months, which is like 16, it's almost 16 and two-thirds. So that amount that we have in there, which I am also militant in keeping, just for the record, is not something we're just pulling out of the air. It is a policy based on best practices of individuals, of an organization of individuals, finance officers across the country.
Exactly, exactly. And it's a pretty long-held percentage. There are places in the country that feel like 20% is more appropriate, but nationally, 15% is an accepted number. It's a pretty realistic number. I mean, if something catastrophic happened, having two months of money available to spend in an emergency is reasonable.
You said 15%?
15%.
So when you say they look at trend to kind of see where they hold everything at, as long as we stay on our trend and kind of just keep it where we're at with 15%, we should be?
Yeah, as long as we're not going, the challenge is not to have it go, you know, 16, 17, 15, 16, 17, 15. They just sort of view that as you're funding your operations with your one-time money. And when-
And they don't like that.
Yeah, and they don't like that. Because that really says you're not aligning your revenue with your expenditures. You're just hoping that your savings account will cover it. So that's kind of where that leads.
Thank you.
Okay, on to next steps. Okay, so our next step is to, you know, really understand the council priorities that also need to be included in addition to the continuation budget. And then obviously bridging the gap. Program and service cuts and additional revenue is what we're really looking at at this point. And then we're obviously monitoring the current year and we'll adjust the forecast accordingly. And if we anticipate, you know, more sales tax or more something else, we'll adjust those revenue numbers to reflect that. And then we want to incorporate any feedback that we have from council for our next session. So there's our process review again, and that usually means we're at the end of my presentation. Any other questions?
So, one of, this really isn't a question, it's just, one of the things we talked about in, when we met with Barbara prior to this in the small meetings, was that Finance Committee would take up and, to use your term, take a deep dive on the strategic budget and kind of look at, well, what if staff said is our areas that we could look at, cuts, and then see if we can come up with any sort of proposals to bring forward to council. And maybe everybody wants to do that, but I think we, well, Julie and I were in the meeting together, so, you know, we sort of volunteered the finance team to, you know, do that, and then-
I concur with that.
Of course you would.
You're not in?
I, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'm glad to have somebody do that for us.
Then we'll schedule, I'll best schedule a special Finance Committee meeting between the 27th and the 10th, and we'll have staff ready to provide information at that meeting.
And we're going to look at this next as a full council when, at the?
April 11.
10. It says 10.
10.
And I do know we have to change some of these dates, so we might want to address that at the April 10th meeting to be sure we've got everything aligned the way it needs to be. All right, thank you. You look like I like kicked your puppy. Sorry about that.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
And there aren't any further questions?
Thank you.
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Okay, make sure your mics there.
Comment now?
Yes. We don't have any, let me just say, we don't have any further business today. We were supposed to hear from Greensboro about their participatory budgeting program, which we are excited to learn about because we're exploring this idea ourselves. However, they had to cancel at the last minute, so we're going to have to get that rescheduled. So that we don't, so we don't have any further business, so please, yes, make a comment.
Well, the only comments I would like to make at the moment are that I definitely support the funding of the council changes that are listed here and that are currently unfunded. And I also noticed that, just like last year when we were up here, we were in the midst of a police controversy and there was a major request for increased funding to the Police Department. And it seems like deja vu all over again, to quote Yogi Bear. So I'm just letting it be known right now that I may have some issues with this going forward, and just wanted them to be known.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I just, I don't know if this is a question for Barbara, are you all looking for direction from us on additional priorities today so that you can come back on April 10th? Or do you want that direction on April 10th?
Actually, the sooner you can provide direction on the specifics of what you want to add into the budget, the better for us because then staff can go into the Finance Committee meeting with a really good picture of what we're trying to accomplish, so.
So should we take a few minutes to do that? Everybody's looking at me because I raised it. So I'll start.
Or do you want to?
You could also communicate it-
I guess I kind of thought of the process you guys were going to-
The city manager. Well, I mean, well, I guess, you know, I guess for me, you know, I think, well, they've kind of captured the areas that we prioritized at the retreat. You know, we know those aren't in the 3.2 million dollars, so, but, I mean, at least I'm not up for adding more priorities.
Well, so I guess that's my question.
On the expense side.
Well, that's my question, is, are you assuming that on page seven of your memo, that, you know, the Equity and Inclusion staff, the police audit, the additional transit expansion, labor insourcing and participatory budgeting, is that those are, do you already feel like you have direction that we want those things in the budget or do we need to have that conversation?
Those are the things that we understood from the retreat to be priorities.
Okay.
Whether or not they were to be included as fully funded in this coming budget is probably the discussion that you all need to have, or maybe you have already had. And let the city manager know and we'll follow her.
No, we haven't already had it.
Right.
But, I mean, it seems to me, I mean, I think this captures what our priorities are, and you guys are going to start working on this in finance, so we'll have a clearer idea of what resources are made available through cuts, obviously, and then we can prioritize this further.
Yeah. I mean, we know that we- Yeah, but, I mean, we know that we can't go, we can't go into next year's budget cycle with a negative $5 million budget. That's not only, not good practice, but not legal. So, you know, I think everybody up here and probably everybody out there understands that if we're going to put these additional programs in place, then we've got to find cuts to cover them, and more.
Right. And I, so I assume that what the idea was with finance to begin to tackle that.
To see it.
Yeah, and so maybe the thing is, on these five issues, for you all to continue to work on nailing down what the, some of the variables-
What we believe the cost would be in the variables.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, some of that's here, but, yeah. Yeah, I mean, so just to clarify, you've captured here in the memo the priorities that came out of the council's retreat. Some of that overlaps in what we talked about in the first half of our work session today, actually, like the Equity Inclusion Office, things like that, but there were some additional items, you know, that'll have to be explored, and we're not certain of the cost of that, and just, you know, again, built into this, and we'll have to make some decisions about that. Good question. Okay, anything further? We do have a closed session motion, because we're always going to have closed sessions, you know, so, take it away.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, included but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties, Bach versus City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 1183.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gwen, second at that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will adjourn from the closed session. Just to formalize the decision of council, we need a motion to remove the city manager, Gary Jackson. I need someone to make a motion to that effect.
I move that city council remove Gary Jackson as the city manager effective close of business today.
Right. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And in further explanation regarding the contract that Gary worked under, Gary had an employment contract with the city that requires that he be paid salary and benefits for 180 days following any removal, and unless, the provision's very narrow, the unless is basically criminal activity, and we're not, we don't, that is not an issue in this case, so we're, we, the city council, of course, will have to fully honor that contract and continue to provide a salary for a period of 180 days. Salary and benefits.
Also, unless he was provided six months of notice.
Notice.
Which he was not.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. That's what the contract says, unless you have six months' notice.
All right.
Okay.
And we would be able to release the contract if it's a public document.
Yes, yeah, the contract is a public document. I know some folks have already requested copies of it, and it's available if anybody wants to take a look at it.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Well, did you all move to adjourn from the closed session?
Yes.
Okay. So then we're just adjourned. We don't need a motion.
Okay.
Okay. If you already did that in the closed session, we're fine.
Well, you need to move to adjourn the open session, which we never closed.
Okay, move to adjourn the open, the open session, which we never closed.
Do that. And then, second?
You have to take action.
Just say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we are really adjourned now.
I mean, we adjourned.